...for August 12th is called the "Order, Please Rise." ...of the United States of America and to the Republic for the stands and our nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To be noted that Howard could not be here tonight. We have some personal business that he has to attend to. Copies of draft meeting minutes for July 16th have been provided to the council members and has also been posted on the city website. The copy of the city treasurer's report as of July 31st is located in the binder at City Hall and also uploaded to the city website for review. Copies of committee reports are on Alderman's desk. Our first bit of our first communication, Chairman Matthews from the Greenport Rescue Squad asking us for a larger contribution. We should maybe send a letter back asking for a larger contribution to the library.
Sounds fast.
Bad aside. First resolution tonight is appointing Commissioner Fiedes, having introduction and a separation. Rob and Del. Okay, the next resolution is authorizing the mayor to execute a contract of Chandler Thinks. This is the result of a tourism board process. It's an RFP. The RFP led to a presentation and this was the group selected. And since Rich is the chairman of the group, would you like to speak to it a little bit further or answer questions or help?
Sure. Cool. The tourism board has been meeting for about a year, maybe once a month. We sent out an RFP, the latter part of last year. We received about a dozen or so responses back to that and after that I think we ended up meeting with like four or five different firms going along with the lodging tax laws. People aren't aware, just a brief explanation of lodging tax is that all lodging here in the city of Hudson, there's 4% that goes off, that's paid to the city of Hudson treasurer. A portion of that up to $250,000 goes towards the tourism board to help market the city. The rest of that goes into the general fund and the idea behind the tourism board is to help market by law is to help market the city of Hudson to help increase that revenue to go into the general fund. So, having said that, the tourism board, we met with other tourism boards in the area. We met with Columbia County Tourism, met with Dutchess County Tourism, and we asked them about their process and, you know, we were all fairly new to this process, so we asked around, "What do you do?" They gave us some advice, they gave us some firms to contact, so that's what we did. And we sent out the RFP and we received results back and we met with them. And then the tourism board decided that Chandler Thinks, the difference between this company, we felt, and this is my own words here, is that, you know, this really is looking to get community involvement, community input, and then develop a plan based upon that. Whereas some of the other companies were more like, "Here's a cookie cutter solution." So, we, you know, this is based upon, the next project is looking at, you know, how to develop tourism in the city of Hudson because going with the basic understanding that, you know, you have happy residents, you'll have happy visitors. You know, if the residents of the city of Hudson are happy, you will, you know, that, the people who are visiting the city of Hudson, you know, it all interacts and it all understands. And some of us even attended different conferences where we spoke places like Austin, Texas, and that's the mantra. It's like, you know, if people are happy in your town, you'll have happy visitors as well. So, that's really, and that's what this company also ascribes to. And we understand that the idea is to get community input, what's needed, fill in the gaps, what's necessary, and to help create a longstanding, you know, way forward to help bring revenue into the city. So, yes. Does anyone else?
Well, the council first. We have, of course, to the next meeting to go over these documents that support this. But are there any questions, the council members, at this point?
My understanding of this is it's going to tell us exactly the gains that we receive from the tourism that we currently have and where we need to go.
Yeah, we do, this company does have, give us back ROI statistics and figures, we need to return on investment, so we do, we will be able to see how much we do gain from this. So, that is part of, is part of their package and proposal. And some of the other companies did not have that information, but this one does present an ROI.
When you say, when you say you want to keep the residents happy and the tourists happy, I notice like now in the state they were in, a lot of residents here in the city are not happy for various reasons. So, does it really take 75,000 to do or have community input? Because I think we can do that part for free. We know already as Alderman what those issues are that aren't making them happy, particularly housing. So, how would that come about with this?
I mean, this is like, I mean, similar to, for instance, the JLE study that we did, where you hire out a consulting firm to come in and do a study. That's what they're going to do and present us with a document. They do the interviews, they document everything. You know, they're, they're the ones meeting with people and so it's not just what I think, you know, because that I don't think would be a fair representation.
How would they give the community input?
How, because they meet with...
How would they do that?
Because they talk to different people within the community.
Some of it's outlined in there in the document.
Right.
Which my question, oh, sorry.
Where is that outlined?
Community perceptions. There's no page number, but it's project plan timeline, city's going to explore learning the city of Hudson, community perceptions, outside perceptions.
300 surveys, 20 questions.
My concern about the community, because community input is important. That's part of our job. My concern about that is like, for example, with the DRI project, a lot of residents downtown feel like they have no voice in that, you know, in the decisions that were made. So, I'm just trying to get an understanding, how would this be different from that?
Well, we'll work closely together and making sure that those voices are heard.
Rich, my question is, how will this study differ from studies at Hudson Holiday in the past couple of years?
I think that those studies were specific for Hudson Hall and this is really looking at how, you know, the city of Hudson compares, what's needed on a citywide basis, how it compares to other cities, how, you know, it's more looking at, I think, as a city as opposed to just an entity. But, yeah.
Rich, I like the point you were saying about ROI. I haven't looked through this, the returns, because I think we probably all, at least a lot of the conversation in my neighborhood is about, we have a lot of tourists and I think if I understood you correctly, because I'd like to carry it back and say this, if I do understand it correctly, is this data might show how it jobs, creates jobs, brings in people staying, restaurants, all of which contributes to this. So, it'll put some, I guess, facts around to help us, you know, calibrate our impressions.
There's very little hard numbers. I mean, the one hard number that we have is, you know, the actual number of the 4% of lodging tax that's actually coming in. So, for instance, that, the first year we brought in approximately $300,000 in the lodging tax, this is approximate, so that's 4%. So, if you extrapolate that number out, if you have 4% of $300,000, then 100% is approximately $7 to $8 million, which is what the city is doing, just the city of Hudson, just in lodging. So, if you were to double that, say for instance, that's just lodging, so you have like food and retail and everything else like that, so now you have 16 to maybe 20 million dollar industry here in the city of Hudson. I think it's, you know, so what we're trying to do here is understand that, you know, how to sustain that, how to modify that if necessary, you know, what's good, what's bad, how things work, and that's the purpose of this, is to figure out what's working, what's not working.
And you think the numbers might be able to give us something that says the value for a job, you know, for the jobs that it provides and whatever. We know what it contributes to the funding.
I mean, part of those interviews would be not only with residents, but also with shop owners and people who work here to find out, you know, what, what is needed, you know, like within the city. Yeah. To help make, like I said, to make sure that people are happy, now, visitors and residents as well.
So, council members, you have until the next meeting to, excuse me, to look over these supporting documents and have a fuller discussion. Then, if we introduce it and get a, oh, anybody from the public like to speak? I can't see who that is, but your audience is standing up.
I'm sorry. I think potentially a process like this could be very valuable and, like you said, Rich, the community process is very important. I was concerned reading their proposal, that they described community process as doing interviews and focus groups exclusively with community leaders, with elected officials, with people who, you know, own businesses, with, you know, people who are in cultural leaders. It doesn't seem like it's a very broad community process and then it talks about at the end of it, having a PR push to kind of sell the concepts to engage the community. So, I would like to see the community process part of it revisited and see, you know, and be, you know, we went through travesty of a public process with the DRI and it would, as you know Tiffany was talking about, and I think it's important that if we, if we, if we're calling this a community process, it has to really be a community process. I also, looking at their proposal, I found that their work for other cities was very kind of insipid and ho-hum. And I don't think that, I think, you know, Hudson, if we're going to have a brand, I think we should look cool and interesting. I don't think we should look mediocre. And I felt there was a lot of mediocrity in the proposal. I'm sorry.
Jess, Tammy.
Hi, Tammy Dillon. I'm on the tourism board and also executive director of Hudson Hall, but I'd like to add what Rich said and also clarify maybe some of your questions. Chandler Thinks of the proposals we reviewed really stood out and I don't know, when they came to present, it was really clear, kind of, the very different approach they took and they deal with small and midsize communities only, they don't do major metro markets. But they really do put an emphasis on community input and quite extensively, in fact, the amount of time they spend on this is twice as much as any other grantee and I think as well, they don't, they're not coming at it with any preconceived notion and might actually come up with some really, I think, unusual suggestions. Unlike the original RFP as for both the, I guess, research and evaluation input process as well as then a strategic plan for the execution of that, and the tourism board is only requesting funding for the first phase, which is the input and evaluation, which would be, I really wish people had heard when Steve Chandler came up to present, it was a real people up process. And we are not requesting any funds for the implementation until we know, have more information on what that might look like. And I think it will be very different than a regular tourism. It's really, I think, and I speak, I speak for myself, but I think also on behalf of the tourism board, that we're really interested in looking at how we can spend a fairly limited amount of money to have the greatest benefit for the residents and business owners in Hudson. And those interests aren't always aligned, but I think at the same time, you know, we have, we're becoming a tourism destination and I think it's important that we try and understand how we can best manage that. And I think going through a process where there is a fair amount of community input and we can certainly respond to focusing on certain aspects and making sure it's inclusive would be a worthwhile exercise for the city to do at this time.
I'm Rebecca Wolf, I live here. A while ago, Peter Spear, I don't know if I can see him, he introduced the concept that the best branding for the city is a strong infrastructure and it seems to me like this concept that, you know, happy citizens make happy tourists or something like that is kind of a backwards interpretation of that idea, which was a really strong, I mean, that is a really, I think, important possible revision to this entire concept. And I'm not clear on whether, you know, the concept has been, has proceeded to a point where there's no return, but like, why, I mean, so every, we know that the potential danger of a tourism economy is that the jobs that are created are not sustainable, not really very like deep or rich jobs for people who live here and that there isn't even really, I mean, so far there doesn't seem to be really good access to the jobs that are created by the tourism economy. And if potentially this study is supposed to, supposed to show that, supposed to show that there is a clear relationship, that would be, I don't know if that's part of what it is, but I guess from my perspective, I wonder why this money couldn't be used to, for example, create like a local business incubator or, you know, be used to directly apply to businesses that have an actual like intention of hiring local people or something much, much more hands-on and on the ground.
Thank you. I remind you though, that there is a situation in the law when it was created about marketing the city. So, we do have a certain confine by that language and how we interpret that language, I think is, you know, debatable, but it is there for the time being. Reverend Cross?
Yes. I echo this, what this young lady said, and I'd like to say, in all of our decisions, we need to look at the impact that it's going to have on our families and children, okay? I don't think that most of, most of us have a vision of long time seeing children and families here. I feel that we're in, at the point of where we're going to be shipping people out and I'm very much afraid of what is going on now. I don't think that we're looking at the benefit of family or family and children, okay? So, I'm going to ask us to be stronger in that. I think that that should be number one, okay? I know that we're moving into a point of where we're having tourism, but tourism should not take the place of family and children.
Thank you. Yes, I think Michael is next.
Hi, thanks for presenting this proposal. Excited to see it. I guess I have a couple of questions and then some clarifying points. It's, looking at the deliverables, it seems like it's really focused on creating sort of like a storytelling or a brand for Hudson with the idea of bringing destination here. So, I wasn't sure in the discussion if I misheard, but it sounded like you were saying, Rich, that some of the deliverables were around establishing how tourism benefits the city. I wasn't, I didn't see that clearly defined in the deliverables, so maybe I just misunderstood that or missed it. But I also think if we're talking about storytelling, even if we have a really inclusive process around storytelling, which also agree with what Peter was saying, is that I didn't necessarily see a very inclusive process for storytelling, even if we have a very inclusive storytelling process, the question is, is that story used in an inclusive way? And I also think that does want to like flag that as potential danger, that we could have a really inclusive story where we talk about how we have, you know, a really diverse city here, it's really inclusive and we have affordable housing and that's one of our strengths, and then we go off and market that, but does the marketing actually deliver that or is the marketing just sort of co-opting a really great story and then not benefiting the community? So, you know, I think, so I think we have to be aware how, both how we're collecting our story, but what we're doing with it once we have it. And then I just wanted to clarify, Tammy, you said we're doing just the first phase. I think on that sheet it said the first phase is 25,000. Is that, we're just doing that first research phase?
It's the first two, it's the collect the information, get the input and summarize it into a strategic plan, but not phase, I guess, three and four, which is the implementation of that plan.
Okay, so that was more like 33 or something like that, is that?
I, you know, it's, the first part is kind of research and planning towards a plan and the second part is executing that plan. So, I guess there are four phases, but it's inclusive of one and two.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Just a clarifying, well, a quick clarifying question off of that. So, if the, we're just doing partial phases, we're starting partial phases, but we're committing to the 75,000 contract with them upfront?
Yes.
That seems like we should maybe rethink that. But I guess what, I think what a few people have said sticks out to me is we really, this really could be an opportunity where we reinterpret what the term marketing means and obviously there's some legal definition of that, but if tourists or residents coming up weren't tripping over sidewalks all the time and that being one of the big things, could that, I mean, what's the full range of what could be in there? I think that's what we need to figure out and then decide how we want to move forward before agreeing to a huge amount of money like this. The, the thing that strikes me, I like the idea of community, community involvement, but it seems like all the community involvement is going to, is going to lead towards in the, in the deliverables is branding and marketing based on branding. And so, it's all just going to what, a logo or some, some branding or something like that. And there's actually some language that I really didn't like in here that specifically talks about identifying a set of market tactics and tools to shift the perception of residents. I mean, that's, I don't know, I don't know why they need to do that. I don't know why we need to pay somebody to do that. And it's just, I want people to take this into context of like other things, $75,000 is a huge amount of money. Look at just, I mean, something, just because I know it from the budget, that's twice what we put into our largest park every year. That's, I mean, this is a lot of money and I think we should be really careful in thinking about how we spend this much money. And we should really figure out, maybe get legal advice on what the breadth of the term marketing could be.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback on what Nick was saying. I'm sorry, John King. And I'm sorry, just to piggyback on what Nick was saying, the deliverables only develop an integrated strategic marketing plan, develop sample marketing tools, and obtain a price estimate to print marketing tool. If you're committing yourselves to the $75,000 and you choose not to go forward after the $75,000, you've either wasted $75,000 or you're committing, or you need to commit yourself to spending whatever it is to execute this marketing plan, which is going to be significantly more than $75,000. And there might be better ways to spend money to benefit of both our visitors and our residents.
Thank you. So, unless there's further comments, but we have, oh, sorry, Kurt.
Kurt Trumble. I just want to say, you know, it looks like tourism is here to stay in Hudson, so I can understand why, you know, we want to see how it's going to affect the community. I am just a little wary because I think we all know that we already see the stores closing around us and, you know, hear from the antique shop dealers that, you know, every year is getting worse and worse. Housing prices are rising and, you know, we, there are some positive benefits, there are, you know, more restaurants and things opening up, but as to what other people have said, you know, the tourist economy is the most fickle economy that, you know, one can have and as soon as people start closing their wallets, it goes away and goes away rather quickly. And, you know, with recession probably looming around the corner, you know, I would really be hesitant for us as a community to pigeonhole us ever more so into an ever-increasing reliance on tourism instead of trying to, you know, perhaps bring in other businesses or whatever. So, I feel that, you know, not to be anti-business or whatever, but, you know, we really, really, really have to be careful here with the money that we're spending and how we're using it. And, you know, just remember that because there is new investment, doesn't mean that it's the best investment that we can make as a community. And I think we just keep that foremost in our minds when, you know, considering all this.
Thank you. So, oh, Chris.
Yeah, I just, just had a thought, something that Rebecca said that just spurred something. Chris McManus, by the way. She talked about incubator and I was just thinking to myself, my God, I've been having so many conversations with people in Hudson who are marketing people, who are looking for work, who are looking for, for projects or, like myself, who aren't looking for work but are more than willing to put some time in. So, I would ask the council to maybe consider another alternative, which would be, let's tap into our local talent and do this Hudson style and come up with a brand with our own local talent. And I, I for one would put my hand in the air and volunteer my time, I wouldn't charge a dime. I bet others would do it as well. And that would be creating opportunities. So, that's just a thought I'd like to put out.
Thank you. So, barring further comment, what would you like to do? Should we introduce this and look for a second or should we table it or it's up to the council? We vote on it tonight, obviously, we still have time to, you know, to consider it before our next meeting, go yes or no.
I know, but with the concerns of the public and, you know, what we heard also from the council, I think it should go back to the committee and maybe make some adjustments from what we just heard of the concerns of the public and take it from there.
I think we do still need to remember that the funds come from the tax and as you said in the beginning, there is a perimeter around how we are supposed to spend it. It doesn't mean that, that we can't, someone made a good suggestion about sidewalks, you know, that we couldn't incorporate some of that, but...
Rob? I mean, I think we should get an opportunity to read through these documents before next week and, you know, introduce and table things in the regular meeting in the past. So, put up the meeting and before decide whether, and then just do the other procedure where we introduce it and... Okay, so this gives us time. The next resolution authorizes, this is a resolution opposing federal and state legislation allowing for heavier, longer trucks. As you may recall, I'm doing a little bit out of order, we'll go to the next one after this. I just thought we'd get this one done before we go into the two bigger ones. You recall, we had a... You recall, we had a, I can't recall her name, can you remember her name? Can you speak to us?
No.
No, she came to speak to us about a group that's opposing heavier and longer trucks, and as we all know, that's a very pressing and important issue here. And this is a group that's working both nationally and in New York State to impose some new rules about how heavy trucks can be, how big trucks can be. And this went through DPW, and they approved it, and now we're pressing along with this resolution, and that will be circulated to the state and the federal government. Do I have an introduction? Did you need an introduction? Second, Rock. Next, I'll go back one, this is the resolution authorizing development of dog parks on the former foster refrigeration center. Any comment from the council? Can I have an introduction in a second then? Oh, unless there's, I mean, I know that most people here are four, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak? Okay, Rich. Oh, sorry, hi.
Hi, Tracy, I'd like to speak in support of it.
Okay.
I recently relocated from this area from Albany County, and one of the things I've noticed is that there's absolutely no dog parks here. And while I have a nice big backyard, I'd like my dogs to be able to socialize with other dogs. I think it's really important for pet owners, and it builds responsible pet ownership by having a dog park and having well-socialized dogs.
Thank you. And we have, oh, Meredith.
Meredith Smith, yeah, I would also like to speak strongly in favor of the dog park. I lived in Cambridge, Massachusetts for nine years before I moved here, and there was a big shared-use park, it wasn't exclusively a dog park, but, you know, it's mixed use, people, kids would go, runners were there, skateboarders. And it did, as the previous commentator noted, inculcate a better sense, I found, of responsible dog ownership, because people, kind of, dog owners really would kind of shame other dog owners if they didn't actually properly tend to their animals. You know, in a positive way, but, you know, just, people are very much more cognizant of picking up dog poop, and things that people complain about all the time in the city of Hudson. And I think that with a designated dog park and with kind of, you know, guidelines set forth as to the proper conduct of dogs in the park, and of the owners, more importantly, in the park, I think that would kind of have a ripple effect citywide, so that dog owners and non-dog owners could live more harmoniously, like, citywide. I mean, it's just...
I'm also a dog owner, also very excited about having a dog park. Just wondering about the Hudson Parks Conservancy's Dog Park Committee.
Yeah, they presented to DPW, and they're, we've asked them to, you know, come up with the actual members to let us know at some point, and that committee will be responsible for the dog park maintenance, not the cutting the grass, but in terms of maintaining all the other rules and regulations regarding...
Is that like a city, a city committee? Wait, wait, hold on. I thought that, I mean, the last DPW, were you going to amend that in the resolution?
To show, yes, to add that it was a committee from the group that's going to fund it.
I thought we, did we go to amend so it just said the Hudson Parks Conservancy, which is a, what?
No, no, I know it. Yeah.
It is amended?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm wrong, okay.
But thank you for getting that on.
Oh, wait, I'm saying the Dog Park Committee, but I think it's just the Hudson, I'm understanding with just the Hudson Dog Park Conservancy, it's not the Dog Park Committee, I thought that was the amendment.
I understood that the Conservancy has a Dog Park Committee.
Right, subcommittee.
Yeah.
And that the resolution says, authorizes the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Hudson Park Conservancy's Dog Park Committee. All of whom were introduced to the DPW Parks Committees.
Right.
But, you know, we'll list who they are, if that's...
It's a subgroup of the Hudson Parks.
How many members are part of their committee?
I'm sorry?
How many members are part of their committees?
I think we have seven or eight. Three of them are also members of the Board of the Hudson Parks Conservancy, so it's theirs.
And they're all residents of Hudson?
Absolutely.
Michael? Just process wise, the resolution authorizes the mayor to create an MOU. Does the council see that MOU, are there any sort of guidelines for the MOU? So the resolution would pass, and MOU would get written up, and then the MOU would come to the council?
Yeah, it's not done, it'll come to us.
Hold on a second, Carol, the MOU of the Hudson Parks Conservancy is done, correct?
There is, no, there is an MOU in existence that authorizes the Parks Conservancy to develop a plan for it. Now, the new one would be to authorize them to execute that plan.
So, can I have an introduction in a second, Rich? Okay, the last resolution, this is a bit of formality, so to speak, this is, allows us, the DRI committee, to enter into a contract with New York Department of State for the Downtown Revivalization Initiative. Now, we've been waiting for, the DRI committee's been waiting for this contract for quite a while, the state moves slowly. This is a long document, you have a lot of time to enjoy reading it, and it just allows us to actually begin the process of the DRI, because it allows us to, you know, make the payments, it'll, you know, and it authorizes the mayor to enter into the contract. I don't know what we need to know about this, other than that it's, it allows us to go forward. Ross, give the question.
Is this kind of a standard DRI entry contract?
Yes, it's, it's a DOS standard contract. But it's gonna, you know, vetted by NMD, and we'll wait for, John, do we have, can we get a decision?
Yeah.
Do you feel it needs to be?
I mean, it might be good to have an area that's what we're doing, we do this month, let's see how that goes.
Okay.
I mean, if it's vetted, it's just boilerplate contract.
Right.
Isn't that what we voted on anyway? That the resolution should go before the committee?
Which was, I'm just confused, okay.
I said, didn't we already vote to have certain resolutions go before the committee before it's presented?
Yes.
I mean, on the one hand, we could...
We already voted on it, so...
Well, we could also vote on and out, except, I mean, the one thing that, it's probably, I mean, we're probably gonna have no say in terms of negotiating with the state if the contract does seem, if there's something strange in it, which, I mean, if this is what they've been using for other communities, then...
So unfortunately, I'm...
Is that part of the sentence, right?
Because it says, do not hammer anything.
I don't think we'll have any voice in it, so...
Then, a timeline, what is that?
Yeah, it just, I mean, there are no subcontracts yet, other than the main manager, the person, the group that's overseeing the entire project. And not all the projects are DOC, DOS either, so some of those projects can go forward without this contract, so...
If it's pro forma...
I'm sorry, it is pro forma.
Yeah, then we should just do it.
So, we have an introduction in a second, and then we have the week to think about it further. Irene? Come on. Okay, within that, that is all the resolutions we've got, but there is, I'm sorry, what? There are a number of other things I'd like to announce, first, I'm sorry. Oh, right, sorry, that's right, Representative Eastlight Solar is here, came up in the Economic Development Committee this evening, there were some remaining questions about what the contract would entail. And we have Representative Emily...
Wendy.
Wendy, yeah, sorry. Wendy Wall. So, Rich, you want to handle that?
Well, one of the residents that we're gonna put forward for this evening, I probably should probably be here, but, Eastlight Solar is building a solar farm, Eastlight Partners are building a solar farm right in Greenport, there is a contract with Andy right now which has been reviewed, that the city would purchase into that solar farm. We would be receiving a 10% reduction, a fixed rate, on our electricity cost. Currently, the city spends close to $400,000 a year on electricity, including street lighting and municipal buildings. We would save about 10% of that, or we're looking at 30-some-odd thousand dollars per year. So there is a contract currently with, under legal review, and we've been working with Wendy in Economic Development over the past year to get certain numbers, and I think the solar farm, there was a public presentation last week, we've been having, had private presentations in Economic Development and Finance Committee meetings, so, you know, we're just looking to move forward with the project. When did you...
That's a great introduction, it's right up the road, it's right on Route Nine, coming into the city of Hudson, and it's gonna, it's going into construction in September, so it should be still on the ground, so...
Well, the thing is that there aren't any solar farms out there for RFPs, so, you know, I sent out another RFP for a similar, for a separate project, and I received no response. So this is pretty much a sole proprietor.
That's a good question, I have that, that question is sitting on Andy's desk right this minute, so we'll find out for certain, but he seems to think we don't need an RFP, but we'll, we'll find out for sure. Any other comment from the council? That's all.
I talked to Wendy before I, I'll just get, I'll email with Wendy.
Okay, well, thank you for coming.
Absolutely, I'm happy to sit around and make your question afterwards.
Okay, a couple of things, you all on the council have got the notice that we are currently undergoing an audit by the State Controller. This came about partly because a previous risk assessment audit was done, and during that process, they noticed certain irregularities. So you're encouraged to meet with the auditor, who's been upstairs most of the time, she can come around and go and find out more. I also want to talk about something. We passed a resolution last month that turns out was a problem, for a number of reasons. We passed a resolution authorizing a grant proposal for a master plan for the parks. Unfortunately, the CFA rules explicitly made it clear that master plans are not eligible for such grants. And I raise this for a simple reason, I think what's happened since Sheena Salvinas left us, is that we don't have a really proper grants process. By the way, this grant costs us $4,000 to be written by LeBerge. Unfortunately, we have to pay it because it comes out of the retainer that we paid to LeBerge. But in, and this is my recommendation, in our code, we have an appointment of a commissioner of grants, and it seems to me that within this period, when we don't have Sheena Salvinas, that it would make quite a bit of sense for the mayor to appoint a commissioner of grants. In section C27, it describes the responsibilities of the commission. It shall be the responsibility of the commissioner of grants to familiarize himself or herself with all current and proposed federal and state legislation granting funds to local government for various uses. So I think that at this point in time, it would make sense to have a commissioner of grants, so that we avoid the problem we just had. Other bits of business, on Thursday, there's, the public is invited to come to the library at 6:00 PM to discuss the possible adaptive reuse of John Edwards' school. This becomes even a more tantalizing possibility, given the scrutiny the city is under by the government for ADA compliance. We have found out, for example, that to make this building completely ADA compliant would cost over $3 million. John L. Edwards, which is already completely ADA compliant, costs slightly over $4 million. So these will be parts, part of the discussion as we go forward in the future, in our discussion of whether we take over the John Edwards School. So on Thursday at 6:00 PM, you can come and talk to our, the architects who are leading this project, their name, to remind you all, is Lacy Taylor Riley Wilson, and this is a public input session, where you can offer your ideas, because it's more space than the city itself can use, even if we sell all the present city buildings on Main Street. And there'll be another presentation later, next month in September, where they come up with their proposal. Their final report is due on September 27th, so we'll have a better idea than the possibility of taking over JLA. Lastly, on September 5th, Thursday, there'll be a meeting of the Zoning and Planning Commission at 7:00 PM right here. And as you know, a lot of what we originally intended was covered in the sixth, I believe, session of Future Hudson. And if you want to participate in this task force or commission, I suggest you watch those videos, they're easily accessible under Future Hudson on YouTube, and they address many of the questions we will be discussing on this commission. Also, now that the Stewart's Community Post Agreement is in place, we can start thinking about funding a new comprehensive plan. So that's also on the agenda of this commission. And that's all. Any comments from the council?
Just a couple of questions.
Sure.
On the first email with the auditor, what's the auditor's name, do you know?
Yes, Diana, I can't remember her name, but it's in the email that I think we all got...
Oh, is that the same person?
Yes.
And then who is on the subcommittee for the zoning and planning?
That's right. Per our resolution, it is the chairman of the planning board, or designated, but he's gonna do it. The chairman of the zoning board, who I haven't heard back yet from, or a designated from, by them. The chairman of the historic preservation has agreed to come. The chairman, there is no chairman right now of the Constitution Advisory Committee, but the member Dale Schaefer's coming. The mayor, myself, the code enforcement officer, John Rosenthal, and Irene Haller. Any other questions from the council, about this or any other matter?
Is the audit, it's related to what financiers are related to?
I'm sorry?
What budget year is the audit related to?
Just the past year. No more from the council? Anything from the people present? Kurt, come on.
How long would the contract that we are gonna be entering into the solar company with, is that yearly, or?
I think it's ten years.
So, the one... So the one on the table actually is for the life of the project that Andy's reviewing. We've talked about it anywhere from 10 to 25 years.
Okay. And what are the, what are the consequences of withdrawing on the contract?
A typical contract, you're making a, you know, a commitment to, to buy a certain amount of energy. We've talked about, you know, working over the, the life of the project in terms of adjusting towards the energy uses, so whether you, you know, electricity usage goes up or down with those costs and whether you take a greater percentage in terms of, you know, it is a commitment. And we've talked about how that, you know, the discount rate could change based on, you know, the commitment. If you were going to commit for one year, the discount rate would not be 10% as it is. So part of it is the law and W of the contract enables us to have certainty for the, for the financing of the project.
Does it restrict us from, the city from entering into agreements with other...
No.
That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Or cross?
In regards to the DRI, I would like to see, since we're doing something downtown, I would like to see membership of downtown taken part, okay? I walked into your, your meeting last week and I saw no not, no blacks, no Bangladeshi, no Hispanics, and I wondered why, okay? Since this is, this is our neighborhood and we have ownership in it. I know it belongs to Hudson, but as citizens, Hudson belongs to us.
Thank you. I'll point out that the committee was assembled by the mayor, but more importantly, I think as every project goes forth, there won't be subcommittees, but there will be substantial community input. Every project has, has a section dedicated to public participation.
I just don't want it to be dressed up and presented. I want us to be able to help mold and shape it.
Right.
Okay, I don't want it to be after the fact.
Correct. Now, these, these meetings for public participation will be very early in the process. Every, for example, right now, we're looking at the Promenade Hill, and every proposal, and we're close to picking one out of two different proposals, has an important and essential public participatory element. That's, that's, that was one of our, when we decided on each proposal, we checked that off as when, you know, when we graded the proposals. That was a very important part of the proposals. So the committee, I can't speak to, but that part I can. Yes?
We're talking about the DRI committee?
Yes.
Is the committee meeting tomorrow?
Yes, there is one tomorrow, 2:30, right here.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay.
Motion to...
Motion to... In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's over. If you...